And we are immediately convening the regular meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents at 1:14. And we're going to convene this meeting on Tuesday, November 12th, in honor of our veterans. Delmar College has a unique and long history with veterans. We are a designated military friendly campus, which makes us a Purple Heart School. And we are one of only 33 colleges in Texas to have received from the governor a Veterans Education Excellence Recognition Award, or Vera. And so, in honor, we have over 1,300 veterans who are enrolled at Delmar College, students and family. But I would like, if you have served in the military and are one of our veterans, would you mind standing so we can call this meeting to order in your honor? We know we have many more who are out there teaching, and so we do appreciate you standing in recognition of all the veterans that we serve. So I'm going to call our quorum, our role to establish quorum, Dr. Babaly, Regent Loeb, Regent Garza, Dr. Adami, Regent Everett, Regent Kelly, Regent Krul. I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Regent Adami, would you lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And please read with us our Delmar College vision statement. "Delmar College empowers our communities to achieve their dreams." We are streaming our live audio and video from this Board of Regents meeting on the college's website in real time, with exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. We do have an opportunity for folks to address the board in general public comment, and we do have one individual today, Mr. Jim Klein. Please come forward for public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Klein. I live at 3501 Walthmore Ray Street here in Corpus Christi. I want to take a moment to draw your attention to actions by President Marcus Escamilla back on October 24th, when he provided lunch for middle school students who are on a field trip here to Delmar College, to the heritage campus of Delmar College. President Escamilla has unflinchingly provided his support for 17 years for these field trips to the campus here. We're very grateful for him for doing that and commend his commitment to the Delmar College mission statement. I'd also like to thank Gracie Martinez, the Outreach and Recruitment Office, for her staff's assistance in guiding students around the campus. Thank you all for this support. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Klein. With no other general public comment, we are going to move on with our rec-- oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. I thought I had signed in back over here to the public's speech.
Please come right, please come forward. Thank you. I'm so sorry.
I've got really good news, so--
Well, appreciate you. Would you mind stating your name and where you live for the record, please?
Yes, I will.
Can we help you? Can we, can someone come help, please? Jeff, would you, just, you've got some props. We'll just be there to help at your direction.
No, that's okay. Oh, good.
You have any, at your direction. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I told you I had great news, right?
When she says, Raul--
Yeah. Do whatever I say, okay? But--
I'm Amy Kinning, and I'm representing the Region Service Center too, here today. Dr. Zendejas asked me to come to present this check to you because you are part of our Goodbye purchasing program at the ESC. And one of the things we all know, that if you group together to do something, you get a whole lot more for your money. You also have a whole lot more negotiating power. And so that's basically what has happened with the Goodbye programming here at the Service Center. Each of the participants who purchase through the Service Center using Goodbye get 1% back for what they have spent for the year. So we're very happy that you spent this over here, and we're very happy to present this check to you. You know, Goodbye does all the hard work. You just have to do the ordering, and then all of us benefit. The Service Center benefits, and so do you. So we really, this year, the Service Center is giving back to different districts and schools $117,000 to the surrounding areas. So like, my next place to go is the Alice Independent School District, and then I'm going to Brooks County, and then I'm going to Freer. So everybody who participates in the Goodbye program, excuse me, gets some money back this year. We want to thank you for your participation. We want to ask you to continue that participation, and we were, we're very excited to be able to present this check to you today. Not too bad, huh? And this is the real check, right here.
And Raul will take that as well.
He's the CFO. He's, he's good for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll take this kind of--
Compliments and money, like--
Compliments and money.
Public comments going well.
All right. Is there anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our recognitions, and we're going to ask Mr. Jeff Olson to come up and recognize a couple of members of his staff.
Good afternoon, Regents. I'd love to come up here and take credit for the amazing work that the team has done and the awards that they've won, but that honor really belongs to Jason Houlihan, and I'm going to ask him to come up here and recognize his team. Jason's an exemplary leader, and he's instilling those qualities in his staff members every day. So I want to thank Jason for his leadership and turn it over to him. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. I have the privilege of calling up Mrs. Shoemaker and Mrs. Guzman, who have won three different awards from the National Council of Marketing and Public Relations, two golds and a bronze. They actually have them, both nice in their unboxed. All right, thank you, guys. We won awards for a coloring book that Mrs. Guzman created, as well as lamppost banners that are currently on the heritage campus that Mrs. Shoemaker created, as well as the viewbooks that you guys saw. I want to say about a month ago, there was a fantasy map in the very, very front of that, that kind of played around with the Delmar College realms of all the campuses and what's on them. So I've had the privilege of working with both of them for quite a few years, and I'm just excited to see them thanked and honored for their work on a national level. So thank you, guys, if you have anything to say. You're welcome.
Thank you. It's a privilege to create work on behalf of the college.
Thank you. It's fun being creative and trying to explore different ways to market the college.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your work, and congratulations. All right, our college president's report. Dr. Escamilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Beginning with, yeah, I was going to go kind of out of order. It's more, it'll make more sense than the dates do. But anyway, starting with October 29th, I attended the Texas Association of Community Colleges Quarterly Meeting. It was fairly quiet, all things considered, but I did that virtually, which is becoming the norm these days, and saves a lot of expense and so forth. The following day was the Delmar College Foundation Scholarship Banquet. Thank you. It was well-attended, with well over 600 people there. And you know, the, there's some magical things that go on between the donors and the, and the students at each of the table and so forth, and it's just, I just look forward to that event every year, and it was, it was, it was just an awesome undertaking. And thanks to Matthew Busby and the team at the Delmar College Foundation, as well as the Board of Trustees, who give of their, of their time to that wonderful effort. Just as a reminder, the Delmar College Foundation gave away more money than any scholarship entity in the region, at, right at $3 million in direct scholarships. That is an amazing thing, and it was celebrated that night, when people got together and got to, get to know the people that were given of their, both their time and treasure. Next, just as, as an update, I want the college to know that interviews for the Executive Vice President Chief Operating Officer will be forthcoming, likely early next month. I want to thank the committee that has come together to do the due diligence on this, on this search process here at the college. I look forward to working with the committees to see if we can find, you know, that candidate that will never fill the shoes of their predecessor, but will attempt to. That's Vice President, Executive Vice President Lenora Keys. More celebrations on that to come. But anyway, just want everybody to know that that's coming, and there will be campus-wide, there'll be a campus-wide interview for people to come and go and do a meet and greet as well, as well, as part of that search for those individuals who will be coming to campus. Okay, and I so regret not being able to go, but unfortunately, I had to attend a funeral on October 24th. But the Turkey Bowl, the 2025 celebration took place, and it took place at the, on the inner side of the, the track out there on Baldwin. I don't know who won, but I think everybody won, according to the video. I think next year, we're going to call it the Ibuprofen Bowl, is what I understand, because of all the pulled hamstrings and twisted ankles and, no, I'm just kidding. I heard there was lots of fun to be had. I missed it. I haven't, we hadn't had it in years and so forth, but I, thanks, thanks to the college for coming together, college relations, faculty, staff. If you've seen the video, they're going to pull it up real quick. This will, this will say everything. Wow, wow.
Love it.
So it looks like the blue team won. Whoever they're representing, I forgot how it was divided up, but congratulations to everybody. That golden turkey was something. Lots of fun. Look forward to the next one, is what I understand. Everybody's looking forward to it, and thanks to the kinesiology department, all the departments that came together to do that. That looked like a lot of fun. Again, I regret not being able to be there. Had to be out of town. And finally, on the 28th, we had our Freedom to Dream Student Lunch, where we brought in approximately 40 or so, 35, 40 Freedom to Dream students and so forth. And I just want you all to know, as I stated in the workshop, that I participated along with those others. Raise your hand if you participated. There was many people there, even if you weren't in a group, if you were there putting that together, thank you for that. We gathered lots of feedback, and as promised, we're going to use that, that data to whatever level it's developed to, to determine the future of those students' time here for sure and/or any others that may be considered for the, any subsequent cohorts in the future. So it was a beautiful time sitting down with these, just lovely people to just talk about their lives and the impact Delmar Colleges have in particular, the Freedom to Dream pilot program. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair.
Any questions for Dr. Escamilla? Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Under Regents' Report, we had four Regents who were able to attend our Association of Community College Trustees National Leadership Congress in New Orleans in October, and we have a couple of us that serve on committees and work on behalf of the national organization. Our new president of ACCT at the end of the conference was introduced as Carol DeCarlo from Reno, Nevada. She is with the Nevada, and I learned it's not Nevada, it is Nevada. She's with the Nevada Higher Education System and is one of their, their appointed board members, and she is coming in to start her year as Chair of ACCT. I'm going to ask Dr. Babaly and Regent Garza to share their, their thoughts and any learnings that they got from the, from the conference. I was able to participate in a pre-conference academy on, or seminar on our dual enrollment program and the fast funding. ACCT has done a comprehensive report on Texas and California's dual enrollment programs, looking at those as potential models for other states across the nation, to look at two different ways of funding dual enrollment. And so Ray Martinez, the CEO of the Texas Association of Community Colleges, and myself served on a panel to talk about that, that program. And then I was also able to serve on a panel discussion on college evaluations, both the board self-evaluation and the evaluation of the CEO, and how those two processes work in concert with each other. And so it was nice to be able, to be recognized and talk about the, the great history that started well before I joined the board on the college's evaluation processes. Probably the most, the most impactful plenary session that I attended was Dr. Claire Brady presented on artificial intelligence and what the evolution of that means for colleges. She is a former community college professor and is now doing this consulting work nationwide, and looking at the evolution of AI and the integration of AI into college campuses, not just from a policy or restrictive standpoint, what, what constraints do we need to put around the use of AI, but looking at it as a true integration, integrating it into our college processes, but for our professors to teach the ethics of AI, to teach the tools of AI. How do our, can our students leave their community college experience, understanding the use of AI in the workplace, and, and learning the tools and the right, as, as we do. We, community colleges can pivot as new technology comes out, and this is one of those places where community colleges need to lean in and do our work so that we can teach our students the proper use of AI as they, as they leave us. And so she, she was a very engaging speaker, and I think would be an engaging consultant for us to consider, but she, but, and again, because she comes from the community college faculty background, I thought her, her presentation was particularly applicable to what we were doing. So those were a couple of the highlights for the, the conference for me. Dr. Babaly?
I wanted to thank ACCT for arranging and planning the conference for New Orleans to coincide with my birthday. So we had a great time on the French Quarter's. We were walking down Bourbon Street, and man, we were rocking and rolling. So it, it was a very good time, especially Bill and myself. We had good company too, Rudy, of course. So we appreciate that. And also, I want to let you guys know that our board chair had, I think she had gliding shoes throughout the conference, because she was gliding in and out of every session, every planning committee, every board meeting. I mean, it's like, she was the busiest person and exhausted towards the evening. I could tell every day she was totally, you know, drained. But thank you for representing us, Chair Scott. I really appreciate that. So the theme of the ACCT conference was reimagining community college and innovation in a changing world. So literally, that was the theme as such. So everything kind of revolved around how we have to imagine the community college for the next 10, 20, 30 years. And I think AI figured prominently in that, in that context, because in most ways, in my opinion, is that community colleges are better prepared to integrate and adopt, appropriate AI technologies with high ethical standards than a four-year, six-year universities and colleges, because they move slowly. Having been a provost at a university, I could see how difficult it is to convince the deans at any academic policy. It moves slowly, because it has to be deliberate, and they have to plan and study the situation. Community colleges seem to be more eager to work with the industries and, and move forward, adopt the, the needs of, of the community at large and the industry at large to, for workforce development as such. So that, that was the environment that this conference took place. And so three things which stand out is the trustees' role in advocacy. I think advocating the needs of the community college in our, in our own context here, geographical context. That session was very productive, and I've learned a lot, and that thing took place. And the second is, there was a, quite a bit of a focus on fostering a culture of belonging for the students, how we have to be inclusive, beyond our traditional categories of inclusivity, we have to be consciously reaching out to the invisible segments of our, of our students and faculty. So that thing hit, hit a nerve in me. I mean, I think we should, I just wanted to caution all of us. I know we're doing a great job, but there's always certain segments of society, you know, communities and students and staff, parents, that we need to be cultivating that, and fostering the culture of belonging as such. And the third one, which I was personally also invited to participate by the ACCT, is the globally competent workforce development, how so many undercurrents, so many global currents are shifting, and that's impacting on American way of life, our economy, our business, our trade, and how we should be consciously preparing our students to, to the jobs which will not, which are not seen today, but tomorrow they'll be coming up without any warning, you know? For example, AI, Nvidia CEO said that two most important skills for AI development for the next 30 years is welders and electricians, very interestingly, you know? It's not four-year universities, six-year universities, research, you know, welders and electricians. And the, the industry needs that to develop further, the AI as such, you know? So identifying skills and industries of the future, and how we should be aggressively planning and studying our needs to incorporate technologies of the future and the skills that are needed in the future as such. So those things are gained, those are the takeaways for me from ACCT. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Babaly. Mr. Garza.
Let me just say how much I enjoyed attending the conference. It is a lot of work, though, and first thing, I'd just like to say it's great that we, we not only participate, but we also have people that actually lead the conversations. I attended a workshop where Carol was talking about board evaluation, self-evaluation, and, and how we set up goals, and, and quite frankly, I mean, she emphasized the fact that we have a pretty stable board, that we've had a very, with the exception of people either getting sick or dying, the board turnover has been relatively low. And so we've really had a chance to be able to work together as a group and, and, and push the, the college forward. And then we constantly, on a annual basis, we bring somebody in to help us actually examine if we're actually accomplishing what we, what we set out to accomplish. Dr. Babaly, he, he talked about global enhancement of the educational system and how it's going to, it's going to impact, and so he serves on the international side of ACCT's initiatives. And then I know Augie served on a panel where he, they talked about some of the legal aspects of community college laws that have changed and how that's impacting the way we look at things. I attended a lot of, a lot of sessions, sessions related to, to AI, and I concur with Madam Chair's assessment of the speaker that we had at one of the luncheons. It wasn't even one of the workshops, but it was a luncheon, and Dr. Claire Brady, I think she's from Florida, but again, some of the talk that she, some of the conversations she had and that I've heard in some of the other, the other workshops was about the fact that really it's a tool, and we're going to have to either get involved and basically try to control the narrative, how we use that tool in the most ethical manner forward, but it is also a tool that's going to make it so much easier to take care of some of the areas at which we have a lot of uncertainty. One is, of course, fraud. There's quite a bit of fraud that actually occurs across the country related to enrollment and some of the AI programs, platforms that have rolled out, or tried to, to use minimal amount of human resource to be able to detect. I must say, fraud before happens in large scale, in some colleges, some community colleges actually have been able to reduce the amount of fraud by a significant amount of percentage, and I'm talking about 99%. That's how much the impact that using that particular tool in that particular manner has, has, has been. Now, I heard some conversations in some of the workplaces, workshops that I went to had to do, making sure that you had your cybersecurity and your course development and your, your IT, your computer cybersecurity folks all working together in order to try to make sure that you, you're at the, at the leading edge of making sure that you use whatever tools are, or being presented to be able to improve or enhance your cybersecurity efforts, right? We talk about doing things, making sure that, that the most talented individuals you have in that area are going to be able to contribute in the biggest manner possible. So I thought that was, that was great conversation. I think there, there was one workshop that I went to, had to do with AI and then mastering AI, making sure that you're, the people that you're trying to, there's going to be huge changes in, I must say, in careers, and so some of the folks that are actually working right now in data collection and data analysis are going to be having to work and making sure that whatever data you're trying to get is, is being fed into the AI systems that you, that you adopt, so that you can actually verify the data and the suggested outcomes or suggested actions that you'll need to take. I attended a workshop related, because I kind of wonder, when you're always talking about either having-- I, I talked to one, one group that was talking about fraud concerns, and there was a platform sells for about $50,000. This is in mostly California institutions, and, and, but it's been able to save millions of dollars for them in terms of being able to avoid some of the fraud, the fraudsters that are actually using, they're more like computer hackers, but they're using systems to be able to, to, to hurt institutions and government entities. But there's, there's a, there's a workshop that I went to that had to do with being able to-- there's, there's a, there's a workshop that I went to that had to do with being able to apply for, and I'm sure we applied for a lot of grants and I heard about hours and all and some amount of dollars we get and, but there's grants that come out of the National Science Foundation that have to do with being able to try to get yourself to a point where you put some application in to be able to get some grant money to be able to actually purchase and develop or have this, this particular technology evolve in such a way that your institution can actually adopt and use it in a productive manner. So those are some tools that are available. I attended a Latino trustees meeting. That's just a kind of a fun thing. Went to another workshop on drones. It also had to do with amount of data that drones were able to collect and then how that data is, is downloaded and using AI systems to be able to use it in, in, in a bunch of practices. And last but not least, I did attend another workshop that had to do with industrial partnering, kind of industry partnering, kind of like we do, do here. But these industrial partners are trying to lay the groundwork for being able to make sure that you get your students to, to develop the skills they're going to need in, in the new tech era, particularly like a concern to, to AI. And there was companies like Nexus, Oracle, SME, Train. All these companies had ideas and some of them, Oracle particularly, offers some of their platforms or programs or software programs to be able to, to help and aid in instruction in terms, in terms of some of the new technology being rolled out. So I think there's, there's opportunities across the board in those areas. And I just, I, I learned a lot. I really enjoyed the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Regent Garza. Hope that you all can plan to attend the next one. Next year will be in Chicago in October. So my guess is it's going to be a little cooler than it was in New Orleans in October. All right. Nothing else for Regent reports. So we are going to now begin our staff reports. And we will start with Dr. Sydney Zombi to give our SAC COC fifth year interim report update.
Yes, ma'am. Hello, Regents. Good afternoon, Dr. Eskimia, Mr. Rivera. So in addition to being the Associate Vice President of Institutional Effectiveness and Academics, I also serve as our SAC COC Institutional Accreditation Liaison. Exactly as it sounds, I'm the go-between, between our accrediting body and the institution. So today, what that looks like is giving you an update on our fifth year interim report. As a quick reminder, SAC COC is our accrediting body. What accreditation does in addition to providing us the ability to provide federal financial student aid for our students, it also signifies that we have a mission that is appropriate for higher ed, that we have the resources, program, services, everything to support our mission. And then finally, the third thing it does is it signifies that we set goals and that we're actively working to achieve our goals in a spirit of continuous improvement. Sounds simple enough, right? So a little bit of history. I love talking about the history of accreditation for Delmar. We were established in 1935 and 11 years later, we got our initial accreditation from SAC COC. What I think is extra special is in 1958, 1960 was our first self-study and site visit. Not just the first for our institution, but we were also one of the first institutions across SAC COC to have a self-study and a site visit. So we really helped pave the way for what all of this could look like. Our last fifth year interim review was in 2016. Our last reaffirmation was '21 and we're up for our next fifth year in 2026. A little bit of a reminder, our reaffirmation is what happens every 10 years. So what you see here is a visual representation of the magnitude of the reaffirmation. We have 73 standards. And by comparison, we have our interim report, which is every five years. It occurs midway between our reaffirmation. It's got 22 standards. When I say standards, that is 22 individual standards of operation. So this is going to range from what our administrative organizational structure looks like, our physical facilities, our academic programs, our student support services, just about every aspect of the college. So for the interim report, it's more focused, there are fewer standards, but still all of them very important and it helps to tell the story of what we're doing at the college. So some milestones, and this is some, some updates, some new information for y'all. August 31st is our first big milestone. That'll be our onsite preparation materials due. So before we even submit the fifth year report, we're going to submit materials for onsite visit, which will come in October. So the onsite visit happens because we've expanded our off-campus instructional sites by more than five since our last reaffirmation. Today, we've expanded by 16. And so we are well past the threshold to require an onsite visit. So August 31st is whenever we'll submit the report for the visit. September 8th, which happens to be in 300 days from today, will submit the fifth year interim report. The onsite visit will happen October 12th through 14th. So it'll, we're going to be right back to back. It's going to be a very busy fall. The, on November 5th and 6th is whenever the fifth year interim report will be reviewed. So that's going to happen off-site, that's what we call an off-site review. And we'll have peer reviewers from all over the Southern region taking a look at our materials. The official December will, the official, the official decision, excuse me, will come in December, right around the time of the annual meeting. So let's talk about the onsite visit a little bit. This is going to be just a two-person committee. We'll have a, there'll be a chair of a committee and then an academic who's going to come to support them. We're going to take a look at about half of our 16 newest off-campus instructional sites. So somewhere around eight. They want 90 minutes at each of these sites. I don't know how we're going to do it in just those couple of days. Whenever we scheduled the visit, we were at, I think, 12 sites. So we, we're, we're growing. So a lot of scheduling to come. I'll give you details. What's a little bit different from this visit than our last reaffirmation visit is it's really focused on the off-campus instructional sites more so than what's happening on the main campus itself. So whenever I say an off-campus instructional site, that includes the Oso Creek Campus that we opened since our reaffirmation. That includes the Aransas County Workforce Development Center that we're almost open. But it also includes a whole lot of dual credit partner sites. And so we'll be taking a small team, driving them around the area to take a look at all the sites to make sure that we're doing the things we say we're going to do. That although this is an off-campus instructional site, it is truly an extension of the footprint of the college and the students and the experiences they're getting at these off-campus sites are comparable and equivalent to what they could get on Heritage Campus. Was there a question about the visit?
I, I find it interesting that they would consider Oso Creek an instructional site rather than a campus.
Great question. So SAC COC has their own definitions for everything. An off-campus instructional site is anywhere besides main campus. To be a campus campus, they, they have a branch campus definition. To be a branch campus, they would have to have our own administrative structure. So that would need a president, that would need, it's a standalone budget in order for it to be a true branch campus in the eyes of SAC COC. I agree, it's really fuzzy. We call it a campus, that's cool. But SAC COC would define a branch campus as needing an administrative structure. Good question.
I have a question. So how do you, I know the president and accreditation liaison work out the schedule for the onsite visitors. What's the role at that time of the Board of Regents? I mean, is, are we on standby? Do we have a meeting, a session with them? Or do they have a Q and A? Just wondering for, for my own information.
Yes, it's a good question. I would like you not to schedule a cruise during those days. Thank you. Just stay close. I don't anticipate a lot or anything of a meeting. That could change, but so future planning on vacations if we could avoid those days. But it really is a focus on the off-campus sites. Now, if we have a chair of the committee who wants to visit with some of you, we will make that happen, but it's really a focus on the off-campus sites.
Dr. Babaly, it's usually, this new methodology has just changed and so forth, but it's usually the decennial report that the Regents are actually asked to participate and so forth. And that'd be your experience from the past at the universities you were part of and so forth, that you've probably seen and so forth. So this time, just tell the Disney people to hold off on the cruise and we'll be, we'll be okay.
It does fall during one of our regularly scheduled board meetings. And are they aware of that?
No, they're not aware of that. We, we're given a handful of dates. Whenever we, whenever we schedule when SAC COC comes, we try to push it as far into fall as we can to avoid the possibility of nasty weather. So that was part of the reason why we did October. We also, sorry, go ahead.
Hurricanes.
I didn't want to say the word. Yes, hurricanes. We also took into consideration the schedule of all of our high schools. So there's a lot of fall breaks, there's a lot of intercession breaks, there's things like that that we want to keep in mind because we're going to spend 90 minutes at a high school. So we want to make sure that we've got students and faculty on campus and a lot of those schedules line up. So we, we looked at a lot of calendaring, so.
We'll give you an excused absence during that board meeting.
I do appreciate that. I do appreciate that. Okay. So our strategy for success, we've got, I talk about SAC a lot. Just last week, we had an executive team meeting and I made my, I reminded everybody. So I'm constantly briefing faculty and staff. Although it's not going to be a visit in the way that we have a visit in a decennial review, I still need everybody to know what's going on because everyone in this room and everyone across the college is an expert in their particular area. And I need that expertise to be able to produce this report. So tapping into a lot of brains right now, so I need everyone to stay current. I'm also encouraging everyone to review and update policies and procedures as needed. The reaffirmation process is a continuous improvement process. So we're looking in, making sure that everything is operating the way that it needs to. We're drafting and editing narratives. My team is very busy right now with that. And another strategy for success is although we're due, we have, like drop deadline is September the 8th, I'm going to back it up and try to get the report out on the 15th of August because things happen. So that's, so I guess we have less than 300 days now. We have teams of writers to take care of these 22 narratives to describe how we're compliant with all the standards of accreditation. We have writing teams which are composed of content experts. And then I have this really fantastic team that's going to serve as internal reviewers to make sure that everything we put out there is accurate and up to date, clean and easy to read. While I'm here, I'm going to give you another update that's less connected to the fifth year interim report. SAC COC has a new president. After almost 20 years, more than 20 years, Dr. Bill Whelan stepped down. And now we have Dr. Stephen Pruitt. I don't normally put pictures of people on my slides, but I wanted you to be aware of this man in case you saw him at an event or a conference. He came from the Southern Regional Education Board, which is also in Atlanta. He served there for about seven years. Before that, he was in charge of higher ed, I think in Kentucky. He's a chemist by education. And as part of his new role, he's, and he's rolled out what he's calling the First 100 Days Initiative. So he is hitting the ground running and making a lot of changes. So these are some of the, the concept of his first 100 days. He's committed to communication. I can attest to that as SAC COC liaison. I've gotten more emails from this man in his first 100 days in office than I probably did from Bill Whelan in the last year. He's, he's very, very communicative. He's also got a blog or he's adding a little bit more information. There's a LinkedIn presence now. He is out there. He's very excited about SAC COC and letting everybody know what he's up to. He is clarifying the commitment to all institutions. This is noteworthy. He talked a lot about R1 institutions, research ones, and then also small private institutions. Accreditation is no small feat. It's expensive, it takes resources, it's very difficult for very small colleges. So he's kind of changed his perspective to make sure that SAC COC serves all institutions. So like I said, he spoke particularly about research ones and very small institutions. However, he did start talking a little bit. There were questions through, it was an FAQ, it was a webinar that he, he did. Someone asked about continuing education. Is this going to be within the purview of SAC COC? And he said maybe. He's talked more about workforce. His perspective is different, not just focusing on the works of the university, which a lot of times with SAC COC, we kind of fall into that. So I think things are going to be changing a little bit more specified for community colleges potentially coming as well. He's committed to reviewing and changing processes. So that giant 70-some principles of accreditation is under review right now. So it could slim down, the focus of what we're required to do to stay in compliance could change. He's also talked about changing the process for substantive change perspectives, which is the materials we submit whenever we start a new program or offer a new site. He's creating new services. He responded to, I don't know, the thought, the accusation, the threat that accreditation inhibits innovation. So he's going to create new things like a sandbox of innovation is what he called it, so that schools can get together and become innovation, more innovative in partnership with our accrediting body instead of working against it. Finally, he's going to incorporate sticks and carrots within accreditation. So there's going to be awards for high-quality programs and recognition of institutions that maintain compliance in an admirable way. This is important, I like to say with accreditation, like if I'm in the newspaper, something bad happened. If I'm successful, no one knows. I work in the shadows. And that's no longer going to be the case, that he, he's working to honor and appreciate and award folks who've done well in accreditation, not just focus on the folks who need a little bit more support moving along. So anyway, this is Dr. Stephen Pruitt, so you're aware. And more, more, and I'll give you more updates as they come. Important note, although there's a lot of changes coming, none of that's going to happen before our fifth year interim report. So we're still business as usual because it takes time to make all these shifts. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. So I admire your emphasis on the carrots. And probably that's where we are and where we need to be. But what were some of the sticks that he is proposing?
Okay, so he didn't propose any sticks. What he said is we already have enough sticks. So if you think about accreditation, you, you hear in the news an institution that didn't quite meet all their standards. A lot of times it has to do with finance or, and, and so there's, there's a whole list of disciplinary action, including losing accreditation that could happen. That all exists. What he's talking about is adding the, the carrots. Good question. Thank you. All right. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zombi. All right, Dr. Natalie Villarreal is going to give us an update on our current strategic plan, Charting the Viking Way.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Eskimia, Regents. If you can believe it, we are already one year into the, the plan of 2429, Charting the Viking Way. And so what I'd like to do is present with you an overview of the plan and how the college has been progressing in the past year. Talk about some of the great internal collaborations that are happening right now. And then really discuss the areas where we're showing strides in the past year, but also areas where the college knows that we either need to start implementing as part of the five-year plan or things that we need to work on. And then lessons learned and recommendations for year two. You heard a lot of detail already today. You've been throwing out a lot of numbers. We've talked about a lot of different things, including the Freedom to Dream Initiative. So what I'm going to ask you to do is kind of just step back for a little bit because what we really are is looking at the 50,000-foot view and some really great points that we need to highlight over the plan. So Guiding Star One, out of the three guiding stars, the first we decided to start with was communicate. What did we mean by communicate? We wanted to put collaborative plans into action across the college. What does that mean? We really wanted to look at strategies that included the practice of shared governance. And I have to be honest, when we first did that, I thought, well, that, that's a no-brainer. But then given everything that's been happening in the last couple of years with the legislature, the fact that we put that within our strategic plan and wanting to make sure that our shared governance stays strong and solid, I think was, was really proactive and innovative. And then also improving all of our communications across the board with our students, our faculty and staff. Connecting beyond the college was also priority under Guiding Star One. So that includes things that you've already heard about in your, in your board reports with enrollment marketing, brand awareness, that things we're doing in the areas of recruitment, and then bringing the community to campus. So how do we know how well we're doing? So when we started this, we started looking at key performance indicators in 2023. And we started looking at how are we going to collect the data? So for goal one, to collaborate across the college, we decided to look at a couple of different data points, including data from our faculty and staff survey and our student survey that comes from the Center for Community College Student Engagement. You hear us talk about it a lot. We call it CSE. Very reputable research organization that's based out of the University of Texas. So when we started these KPIs and data points, that really felt that that was the best way that we were going to measure. However, as we've started moving forward and started putting some of these strategies in, However, as we've started moving forward and started putting some of these strategies in, in action, we've realized that those are maybe not the best ways for using the CSE for faculty and staff engagement, considering all the different things that communication is doing to enhance our metrics. So what I put there in progress is because we would like to shift the way that we collect that data point. Now, that was specifically with faculty and staff. With our students, we were able to use the CSE in looking at college-sponsored activities. So looking at over 200 students, about 14%, there was a 14% increase in what we know is happening on campus, the engagement on campus, and that our students are starting to do more of that. What was a really, really great number was to see the Strategic Enrollment Management data point that we had more students who were using the resources on campus. So when we talk about resources on campus, we're talking about counseling. We're talking about the food pantry. We're talking about advocacy center. So we had over an increase of 100 students who are using that according to the Student Engagement Office. So really great things to report happening, and that's also coming out of the CARE referral. I believe Dean Hernandez has talked to you about the referral process that we use. What did we learn with this analysis and collaborating across the college? Again, with all the new things happening and all the, the new tools that we're using, we really felt that the CSE for faculty and staff wasn't the way we wanted to capture the data. We also know that now with our student resources increasing, it's exceeding our goal. So now what are we going to do to change that KPI? The other thing that we've talked about is you've heard about the Customer Relationship Management System, or the CRM. Under Jason Houlihan and his team, they're really revolutionizing the way that we take count here at the college in terms of what our students are doing and what our faculty and staff are volunteering for and engaging in. So I think for us, a year into the plan, with these new ways to count our data, we're looking to be able to give you that information next year, especially when it comes to surveying our faculty and staff and the satisfaction they feel over our communications. Connecting beyond the college. In this area, we looked at the Strategic Marketing Plan. So we looked at the total number of events from the Thress Grace Community Room, the Rotama Room, the Dome on Windward Campus, Richardson Performance Hall. And because we have been focusing on bringing the community to campus, we've been able to capitalize on bringing on more events with more staff and more concentrated efforts on how we organize events on campus. Last, last board meeting, you also heard about the Brand Health Survey by Jesse Krobo-Sinski. And so that is going to be our baseline when it comes to looking at the community awareness of Delmar College. And what Jesse reported at the last board meeting, that we had 36% of positive community awareness across the board for our area. And so we were really excited about that. We're going to use that as our baseline and continue measuring that over the next few years. When it came to the last, the last data point here, we used the CSE for students to see how many of our students are participating in community-based projects and volunteer opportunities. It went down 8%, but as you can see, it's still a pretty steady number and a high number of students are engaging across the community. Again, what we're going to do next time is use the CRM so that we can better capture numbers of RSVPs to see if we can get a broader, a broader count to see how many of our students are actually out there in the community. So I am asking for a little bit of patience with that one. So what did we learn from this, from this section? Again, we know that our college and community partners, there's more collaboration going. We're able to count better. We're able to establish that baseline goal. We know that our DMC brand awareness is high. But if you remember from the brand awareness survey that Jesse pointed out, our high school students were where we really had the opportunity to work on in making sure that they are starting to see the value and the excitement of being at Delmar College. So we do know that that's an opportunity in our student area. And again, going back to the CRM, we really are excited about using that to really capture some real data points moving forward over the next four years.
I'm curious, you talk about the communication events between the college and our external partners.
Yes.
Are you measuring that only by the events at those four locations that you talked about?
Currently at this time, yes, only for external events.
Okay, because I would think that part of our relationship and our communication with external partners could be measured by our program advisory committees, by participants in our foundation programs, by... I think that there's, there's, there's a broader way to talk, not just talk about the, the facilities, but our actual external partners, everything from the arts to process technology to... I just think there's a broader way to talk about it. So I'm curious as to why you would limit talking about our external relationships just by those who use our facilities.
That, that, when we looked at this, it was just a data point that we knew that we could count to show the actual external events coming onto campus, coming from the community. We didn't necessarily consider the academic side in terms of our advisory committees, but that's definitely something we can take a look at.
Yeah, duly noted. It's, it really stems from the creation of the, the Community Room over at Thress Grace and so forth. And it's, it was a very fundamental way of doing that. But, but we can certainly look, even beyond the advisory groups, because I can already think of some other things that we're doing. We're using, we're being way more strategic about states of the districts and everything else and all these kinds of things.
The work that Mr. Garcia is doing with our, with our school districts. I just, I think there's a much broader definition of our community engagement and with our external partners than just defining who comes in and uses our facilities.
Noted. We will definitely take a look at that. I do believe Mr. Garcia's events are part of, are part of these numbers as well. Because those are external partners who are using the Thress Grace Room.
Duly noted. We'll sit there. That'd be a great pivot point, opportunity to pivot on the, on the plan, so.
Yes, absolutely. Bringing community to campuses is a priority, and so we'll definitely look at other areas. Does anybody have any other questions before we move on to Guiding Star Two?
I had a comment, you know, in, in Regent Scott's kind of a similar vein to that. You know, I, I think highlighting those advisory committees is, is really going to help us on the recruitment side on some of our numbers that were softer than I think they need to be. Because I mean, I think if you're, if you're an R1 or R2 university, you're, I mean, you're, you're selling research. And that, you know, you go to school there, you get to participate in the research, and you can go get a job researching after you're done. I think for us, we are selling to a large extent workforce training and being able to show the community that that training is developed by the people who are going to be sitting there being your boss after you graduate is a very important thing. And so if we can be, you know, the conduit for some of those people being more visible, so people know, oh, I'm going to go be a nurse, but one of the people on the nursing advisory committee is the head of nursing at this hospital that's here locally where I want to go work, you know? And, and so I think being that conduit, I think in some ways will, will help us a lot. And trying to, I know it's hard to capture that in a metric, but that's, I think what... That, to me, is more important than how many times somebody uses trace, you know?
Okay.
The...
And I know that, that Dean Merrill and Dean Kors do keep, keep track of all of our advisory committees and all the individuals who are on it and who chair. So we def, we have that information prepared. We can incorporate that moving forward. Which is great about this plan is that we're allowing for a lot more flexibility this time around. So we can incorporate things as we think about them. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
So moving on to Guiding Star Two, which was Elevate. This was, this Guiding Star was focusing on our higher education landscape and the changes that were happening in the region, specifically keeping in, keeping a priority the new outcomes-based funding model. This plan prioritized our program and our processes and how we are specifically using that to focus on student success. So some of our strategies included new programs, helping students transition from high school to college, aligning our institutional framework with House Bill 8 funding, and maintaining the physical resources of the college. Again, in talking about lessons learned, when we started this, it was a really great idea to put in the House Bill 8 framework funding so that we could look at our year-to-year growth and changes. However, the challenge with that, as you now see, is that the state is changing those year to year. So we are having to stay flexible with that. You've already seen some numbers that shown what we are getting paid for, what we are not getting paid for. What I'm going to show you strictly numbers on the students who have enrolled and completed, just so that we can stay with student success from that angle. I'm digging all of these arrows moving up. And those, the small arrows, the checks are supposed to be green because this really highlights all of the different areas that y'all have been asking about and talking about in terms of student completion, whether it's a degree, a certificate, an OSA award, whether it talks about a student enrolled in dual enrollment, faculty training in terms of e-learning. When we looked at student completion two years ago, we're like, how are we going to know when a student completes? Instead of doing 30 to 40 KPIs and data points, we picked several. And so these are them. And this, these are one of the areas where I think we can look at it now and say, wow, we've overshot. We're doing a phenomenal job. Kudos to our faculty and staff. And so 35% of an increase in students in dual enrollment who have completed the 15 semester credit hours. We knew that was going to be a significant point that we wanted to look at, to focus, to strategize as a faculty and staff team. And we did. As you can see, we had it by 3%. We shot it by 35%. So again, really great things happening. That's an opportunity for us to look and reevaluate that key KPI and see where we're going to go for the next five years. I think somebody already mentioned 10,000? And then everybody. In terms of e-learning and training, our faculty have really pushed and worked hard to start getting trained in some of the areas that really make their online and hybrid classrooms more successful. And so you see that in that number is significant. And Dean Gregg is not here today, but I know he would be really proud of that number. So we know that our students are completing at levels like they never have before. So thank you to the board for giving us this opportunity to get innovative, to get creative. And as you heard earlier, our team is working so hard every day. You've heard about Freedom to Dream, but we'll talk about some more initiatives later that are really pushing the needle and showing the growth within the strategic plan. In terms of maximizing resources, we put on hold the first, the first KPI because of the governor's order. But right now, we're at about, I believe it's about $1,400 for a full-time in-district student taking 12 semester credit hours. That did stay the same for Fall '25 due to the governor. And so we've put that KPI on hold since we don't really have a lot of control over it right now. But we will keep you informed as that changes, if it moves forward in any way. The ICLCs, we wanted, our goal was 25, to increase by 25 students completing an ICLC and five, and five more for over the next five years. And we went up to 268 students. So again, this really goes to show you the high level of work that's happening, but also the shift in the past two years here at the college. And we really are going to need to look at our KPIs and see where we want to go. In terms of matriculating, students matriculating credit, we had put by 200 every year for 1,000 students over five. So even though you've got that little alert button, because we didn't hit the 200, we still did phenomenal with over 90 students coming from a matriculating to credit. Does anybody have any questions about that? No? So again, the governor's freeze has us on hold for that one particular KPI. We will continue to monitor that for you. We know that our students are getting involved in those high-demand institutional credentials. So that is not only a win for our students, but the strategy that our faculty and instructors have put in place is really helping us when it comes to our appropriations from the state. And how exciting is it that our high school students are really taking advantage of not only dual enrollment, but then matriculating, matriculating over to Delmar College? So these are all really good things that we're seeing strategically over the year. The last, and I'm not going to lie, my personal favorite is Cultivate. We've talked to great links, excuse me, that culture and connectivity are significant to the Delmar College Vikings, but it was significant in terms of our faculty and staff saying we wanted more. So everything from how we welcome a new student, how we welcome our new employees, and the ones who are here on campus, how are we continuing that culture? Helping our professionals with their professional development. That's something that Dr. Eskemia has prioritized as being key to moving the college forward for our student success. So some of the strategies that we've looked, that we've gone through with, with cultivating is, again, the, the professional development, but the big, fun, exciting one, which is establishing our culture of care, the Viking Way. In terms of looking at the KPIs for our faculty and staff, we knew that one way we wanted to ensure that our faculty were top-notch was making sure that we kept our tenured or tenure-track faculty. We hit a goal of 75% two years ago. In '23, '24, we were at 72%. I think we may have had a couple of retirements, Dr. Halcom, that brought us down to 71%. But really, the idea here is to show that we are engaged with our faculty. They are a priority, their professional development, and their growth is significant for the college. And we are continuing to monitor that, monitor that. But we're still in a really great place. In terms of how faculty and staff, staff perceive the college, we haven't established that baseline yet because we are going to be using the Viking Way to show that. There's going to be pre-surveys and post-surveys as they go through these Culture of Care initiatives and trainings. And so we will be able to start providing that here soon. Those trainings are going to start at the beginning of the year. And in fact, you as a board are going to have an opportunity to go through that Viking Way training to begin with. So we're really excited about having you go through that. Increasing the number of faculty and staff in advisory training. That went down because we did have a significant group in our student affairs that had already gone through some training. So they didn't necessarily need it the second year. However, as, again, as our, our strategies have been moving and we've been operationalizing some things, one of those areas was with Dr. Halcom and team where she did a mandatory advising training for faculty that was instituted this spring and summer. And that was a much more significant number for our faculty to attend training. I believe it was 91% of our faculty that actually did get to attend that training. So moving forward, I will incorporate the trainings from Dr. Halcom's team into this so that we can get a better picture of what our, our faculty and staff are doing in terms of, of training, especially when it comes to advising. Does anybody have any questions on that? Optimizing the student Viking experience. Again, this was such a great number to look at in terms of our enrollment. Our enrollment is steady. It's strong. Again, we are showing you our credit enrollment, but we also show our continuing education enrollment, again, with our numbers asterisk for '24, '25, because we know those numbers have not been, are not certified just yet. And we are still waiting for the fall-to-fall retention. We have it at about 57% for '23, '24. Those are students who started in the fall '23, matriculating to fall of '24. And so we're looking forward to seeing it. It's an ambitious goal to go from the 57% to 70% over five years. But we think with the initiatives like Freedom to Dream that we can get there. So we're really excited to show you that number next year. And then we also turned back to the CSE and looking at our students and how many of them participated in our college-sponsored activities. We have a lot of great activities that are happening on campus for our students, and we're starting to see that ink... we're starting to see that increase. Again, as mentioned before, you're going to keep hearing about that CRM because we're really excited to actually capture RSVPs from our students to see how many of our students are actually engaging on campus. So, this was really great to present optimizing the Viking student experience because our enrollment growth, we're trending up, our student participation is increasing, but it's not only increasing, our strategy is to operationalize better ways to count things, like with the CRM. But then also, not just with enrollment, you're seeing those completion numbers, we're looking at operationalizing areas within onboarding, with advising, with that tracking of students' milestones, all things that are continuing to be worked on by our faculty and staff that are going to, again, continue to show our enrollment increasing, but also our completion rates increasing, which is really exciting. When it comes to the major achievements, you heard about, a lot about Freedom to Dream this morning, 1.0 and 1.5. I have to tell you, that is just one of the initiatives that everybody here is working on, and I do give a lot of credit to our executive team that's here behind me because these are just a few of the initiatives that our faculty and staff are working on. So, when we talk about the overall strategic plan of the college, you're hearing me talk about these big-picture initiatives and these big KPIs and data points. But underneath all of this, I've had phenomenal colleagues who have come in and are strategizing in terms of communications, marketing and recruitment, just met with Mr. Kulidu regarding an IT strategy, and then not including, again, things like Freedom to Dream. So, just know that underneath the overarching charting the Viking Way, there's all these great strategic plans that are happening in different areas that are feeding into charting the Viking Way, and I think that you can see it, not just in terms of our KPIs and data, but you're hearing it across the board and everything that we are working on, it's significant. Now, I would be remiss without saying where are some things that we need to continue to work on. So, you talked about communications, right, earlier this morning in the workshop? You're curious about more communications within our dual enrollment and our K-12. That is a strategy that is currently being worked on. So, when we talk about dual enrollment strategy, we're not just talking about the academic side, that is the core. We're talking about how do we communicate to high schoolers? Is Jason, I don't know if Jason is in the audience still, he and Jesse Krobosinski had a student focus group the other day, and it hurt them to hear that sometimes we're kind of lame with the high school students. They don't, they love some of our marketing, some of it they could do without, but the great thing about our staff is that they're listening, right? So, we're strategizing, how do we really get to that 16- and 17-year-old on social media and get them to come to Delmar? So, those things are happening. In terms of curriculum alignment, you heard the House Bill 8 is shifting year-to-year. We have to keep our students focused in what they want to accomplish. So, Dr. Halcom, the academic team, and Dr. Dibetta's team, they're having to stay diligent in making sure that, yes, we do need those appropriations, we're trying to shift as needed while ensuring that our students are getting the services they need and the academics that they need. Again, I brought up communications channel, and then the e-learning expansion. You saw that a lot of our faculty and staff are getting trained in e-learning. We know that's an area that continues to grow, it's not going anywhere, and so, that strategy has not been developed yet, but we are talking about what does that look like in terms of the future of the college. So, I will close with some of the recommendations that we're looking at for Year Two. Again, you saw some of our KPIs were just blown out of the water, so we need to revisit those. Remember, when we had, when we developed this plan a year and a half, two years ago, we didn't have the Freedom to Dream initiative. We didn't have some of our new faculty and staff members that are coming in in this new structure. And so, there's a lot of new opportunities that we're addressing, opportunities for our faculty and staff to grow. Dr. Eskemia continues to prioritize professional development. We had Kansas State University on our campus last week talking about doctoral program opportunities for all of our faculty and staff. So, there's a lot of really great things that we're going to continue moving forward for recommendations for Year Two. And then, again, we want to make sure that we're capturing the right methodology for all of our student engagement data. Two years ago, when we started this, we had things like the CSE, but now, as we're getting more innovative and we're bringing in new tools, we want to be able to incorporate those when we share our data with you. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you very much, Dr. Villarreal. We do appreciate the rationale behind the data that you present to us, as well as your learnings and the college's learnings in this whole process. So, thanks for that very thorough presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our pending business list for upcoming meeting in December, we have kind of several annual reviews or updates, including policy review, tax abatement review, our professional contract review, our foundation update. So, there's several things like that that are happening. We are going to hear kind of a comprehensive TERS update, and I'm looking at Regent Loeb and Regent Garza because we'll ask you to participate with Lenora and whoever else makes those presentations on the TERS boards that you sit on. And then, we'll also have kind of a House Bill 8 update for December. We will not have a January meeting, and so, then we'll come back in February. Oh, we will have a preview and decision, well, not decision, we'll have a discussion on student charges in December as well. Any questions on our pending items list? Seeing none?
Can you repeat, December 12th? What was the?
Oh, I'm sorry. We will also have a preview of student charges in December.
Are we meeting?
We will, we will meet in December. We will not meet in January, unless necessary. We do not have a scheduled, regular meeting in January. December 9th? Thank you. Yeah, we'll look at the calendar at the end of the meeting. All right, so, moving on to our consent agenda, we have three items under consent, which is approval of minutes and acceptance of investment and financial reports. Do any of these items need to be moved for separate consideration? Seeing none, motion to approve by Mr. Loeb, second by Dr. Babaly. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? All those in favor of approval, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. All right, going on to our regular agenda items, now, we're going to come back with discussion and possible action related to the conversation this morning. So, we want to talk about whether or not the board is comfortable proceeding with interim or the draft recommendations, and so, we're going to ask Patricia Benavides-Dominguez and Mr. Garcia to be available, and Dr. Eskemia is going to start that off.
Yes. So, Regents, we heard you loud and clearly this morning, and that's exactly why we presented in a workshop fashion the way we have successively and so forth. So, if you kind of just go back to last year this time, just a real, just a close, just kind of a recap, we moved very quickly, we have a concept, we brought it out, we implemented it in spring after you all gave us approval in March, I believe, which was a real quick turnaround and so forth. And we saw, we saw thousands of people interested in this sort of thing, and it really boiled down to about 1,700 individuals, 1,800, 1,700, 1,800, what was it?
1,700.
1,700. So, almost 1,800 students and so forth. And what we've done is we've learned a lot about the data, about those with the highest needs, and then various levels, all the way up to fully college-ready and already locked in and well on their way to the degree, everything in between. We've, we heard you all this morning as we were presenting, as we've presented to you all with the backdrop and the context of a couple of things, several things. House Bill 8, House Bill 8 was no small matter, and it's what really undergirds this entire process. When the state changed the way they funded community colleges, so we said this was an opportunity to change our business model, given the position that we've been in for some years and given the balance of our three-legged stool of finances, and to move ahead. And so, we have. And in this first iteration of 1.0, we see that we have an investment there, and we opened, we widened the bar for students to come in because we didn't know what we didn't know at the time, and we certainly appreciate that effort you all support to move ahead. In the 1.5 version, the reason why I keep calling it 1.5, because it's not a full bite at the apple kind of change, it's kind of an incremental change, as is good policy typically in the public, especially the governmental arena, is to move, you know, conservatively and so forth. And what we've also heard is that, given the backdrop of HB 8 and given the Freedom to Dream 1.0, we are well on our way, but we have to have sustainability, and we heard you all, and we, loud and clear, we've known that. And we know there's going to be a compounding effect, and we knew that there would be some restrictions, that there needs to be some restrictions on this program as we move ahead because we're not doing students with the highest need, as those almost 300 students that I talked about with the highest need. We're not doing them, we're not doing as big a favor to, we could do better by them. We could do better by them by giving them some restrictions and some alternatives that won't cause them to go into debt, that won't cause them to spend their precious time away from their families and so forth unnecessarily without some sort of, some form of success in front of them or the greater likelihood. We heard you all, and we heard you all say that there needs to be a return on this, and when are we going to start seeing the return? That's the difficult part about this being the pilot and about us getting out there, getting out there too far ahead without the data. But at the same time, we knew that there would be a need for two, possibly three cohorts to get started and so forth. But we need to prove this out, and we need to prove out some numbers, and probably with some restrictions, again, for first and foremost, as always, with the student first and foremost in mind. As such, I mean, that's, those are the notes that I've taken, if I'm missing something, I want to hear more from you all. We put this agenda, we set this agenda up with this in place so that we could come back and visit because if there's anything that you all want to pass about it today, that there might be a possibility. We knew that the setup was originally scheduled for a workshop this month and serious consideration for approval with detail the following month. But I placed this item in here on the regular agenda for more advisement and/or if you all wanted to, say, move ahead with these restrictions and/or, I didn't know what I didn't know about what you all might be considering at this point, the way it's supposed to be. We're supposed to talk about it in a public setting, and so, here we are. And right now, as I understand it, I understand it, the two big sticking issues are, and for all of us, not just you all, is the parameters for the restrictions of how we're going to bring people in, and then, again, the financial sustainability of the compounding effect and so forth. In other words, when are we going to start seeing those students graduate and start bringing that return that we theorized and put out there as the financial model for this? Please let, this is, I just, we need further feedback from that point. Those are my opening comments.
So, I didn't, I haven't heard anyone at this table express a concern about moving forward philosophically or in terms of support of the program. In fact, I've heard the exact opposite. I think we've all been very proud of where the program was. And I know that we have a lot of community members. I ran into one the other day who was like, I hope you're going to do this for Year Two because my daughter's a senior in high school, you know? So, we've heard, we've all heard that, right? Are you going to, yeah, are you going to do it again? And so, I think there is a, there is a community anticipation around this, and I don't think so, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, board members, but I don't think any of us disagree with the concept. I think what we want to make sure, what I want, and then I'll speak for myself, I think what I want to make sure is that we do understand and are entering into with clarity the financial obligation on behalf of the college. So, I don't see any, I don't see any of us saying, put a break on what you're doing in terms of planning, so, continue planning, but I think I would like to see the full financial picture with Cohort One and Cohort Two layered on top of each other and that we have a better understanding if we come back at our December meeting with the financial plan and what that longer-term financial plan looks like.
Absolutely.
Is what I would prefer to do.
That's what we were looking for.
And then, I'm going to ask Mr. Kelly and then Mr. Loeb to give their comments, and anyone else, Mr. Garcia.
Okay. In all the years I've been on this board, I have not got more anecdotal feedback than Freedom to Dream and with unexpected students who are now going to school. I don't see us as having an alternative but to move forward. The community has embraced this, and it's certainly enhanced the college's reputation. Obviously, we all want to see that it's financially sustainable, and the way the state has backloaded how the college gets reimbursed is problematic, but from my standpoint, we have to move forward.
Mr. Joyce?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I think, I think if the state is, and I won't say the state, I would say elements within the state, because I think the legislature and the delegation, our delegation specifically has been incredibly supportive of this, and so is the governor. I mean, I think the numbers are looking pretty good. I mean, you know, if it's break-even, great. If it makes us a little money, great. If it, if we got to subsidize a little bit, great. You know, it's a lot more popular than I thought it was going to be, both from a, how many people signed up for it and, you know, how little grief we've gotten. I don't, I don't think I've had any negative comment about the idea. The interesting thing, or one of the things I want to talk about is, we did not, we set a cap on how many hours you could have and apply for the program. And I think the point of that was that we didn't want a mass transfer of existing students into the program that would then mess up the economics of it. And I wanted to have a conversation about when it is an appropriate time because if we are trying to accelerate, you know, there's probably some people who took two years of, or took a year of college 20 years ago and would like to go back and finish that could transfer in 30 hours and finish in a year. So, I wanted to get a sense on, in the number of students we rejected, how many of those were over 15 hours, like, were rejected just because they had over 15 hours? Do we have a number on that?
We have the data. I don't know if we have it with us today.
We had the data, but I can definitely get that information for you for the next time.
Okay, great. Because I mean, I think we do need to have that conversation, is when do we allow that to happen? I think we have to be really careful how we message the, the new track, I guess. I'm a little concerned that if we kind of call it something else, you know, students that need developmental work, that we could, you know, make it be something different. And I, you know, I think we need to work, we need to work very heavily and think really hard about how we message that when we go out. You know, I don't, I don't think we have a separate application program. I think we, you know, identify those people, have them sign up, identify them, and then say, hey, you know, we're giving you this opportunity to do it this way where you're not using your time. But, yeah, I'm okay with that idea, but I think, you know, that is, that's a very, the, yeah, the messaging on that has to get really thought out how we.
Yeah. Understand, the nuances that we use for college, to define college readiness.
Right.
Is the approach. And it's not just one-size-fits-all, which is our strength.
And it's not just one size fits all, which is our strength in this overall process, where we can have, you know, multiple definitions and combinations of students that could get into very short-term programs that will quickly return the investment of our dollars. And at a dollar-for-dollar kind of scenario, if not slightly more, is from that, ranging from that all the way to, you know, to graduation with the associate's degree and transfer. It's, it's just, it's just tough without a couple of semesters under our belt. That's the difficulty.
Right.
But, but at the same time, I keep going back to it, if we're putting our student first, we're going to sit there, we're going to, like the medical field, do no harm, you know, start with that. Make sure that we will do no harm. And sometimes doing what we feel is doing justice to the students or for the students is more harmful than not, when you place a burden upon them that they're just not ready for. We keep that at the forefront.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm thinking, I want the message on that being that we are adding support for those students, we're adding support and flexibility for those students who need extra help, rather than we are limiting the program to students who are already ready.
Oh, absolutely. Because we have alternatives. It's not, it's not, it's not a no, it's a whoa.
Yeah.
And let's, let's help you get through this, and we have a plan for you. But they also have to sign contracts with us.
Right.
And so that's a commitment in two ways, where they're going to, you know, commit to come into the campus, next number, and go into their math learning center, and go into our stone writing center, and go into the reading center, and so forth, and going through our, our programs of college readiness, college preparatory. There's a commitment that way. The fun, go ahead. Were you going to say something? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I, my next question, or my next comment was, I would love to see when the semester is over, some sort of report card as to how everybody did, and if there's, you know, if a certain class of students within the overall group are doing better than others grade-wise, attendance-wise, you know, are the adult, like, are the adult learners doing well? Are they doing the same? I mean, do we have any sort of feedback thus far on, on how that's going? Because some, all this in, in a lot of ways feeds back into, what is the financial stability of the program?
Absolutely. And does it fall into our theoretical underpinnings of, you know, a full-time student that came in college-ready, you know, persists at the 70 percentile and so forth? That's that, that's, there's that sweet spot that we're, we're trying to use to balance the whole calculus for this program. They're absolutely, so we have to get there to determine that. We believe that the data, you know, we're very, we're very typical of the data. Go ahead.
Well, after Regent's, Garza's remarks, we have a short video that we want to show you regarding Freedom to Dream and the comments that students told us.
Okay, great.
We'll do that here in a bit.
Yeah, let's do that in a bit.
I'll be quiet for that.
No, we'll keep going, we'll keep going. So we'll show that, because the feedback will support what we're, there's some anecdotal feedback from that meeting we had.
No, so, yeah, I mean, so I think I'm good. I mean, I'd really like us to look at adding, because I mean, I think there's going to be a possibility at some point of adding students who have more than 15 hours, and maybe we have a limit on it where if we say, you know, if you last attended school more than five years ago, you know, or two years ago, before we ever announced this program, we'll take your transfer credit and get you through. Because I mean, there may be some people with 45 hours that we can have in and out of here in a semester done, and that's going to help our metrics.
Race to the finish cohort as opposed to Freedom to Dream.
That's why, that's why we're moving slowly with this. That's why we're moving as slowly as we are, very incrementally, very purposely.
But yeah, I just, I'd really like to see some data on like who, you know, who we didn't take and why.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Mr. Garza?
I can hold my comments.
Okay.
I can hold my comments or questions until after the video or?
Let's go ahead and do the.
You want to do this right now?
Yeah, let's keep on going in the conversation.
Just a couple real, real quick comments. Usually when I consider whether to move forward to a program, even initiate a program, I think about what success have we had, some parallel or similar program? And I kind of, I hadn't seen any numbers. Of course, we talked about going from, you know, 2,500, 2,800 we were, to 5,000, to 10,000, to 20,000, and maybe everybody, right? But we, I know that I thought about saying, okay, when we're going to provide dual credit for free because we're going to get reimbursed by the state, I guess it'd be great if we had a number to show how our, how, what we projected we were going to do with the dual credit program and how we actually get paid. I don't know if that's available, but that's certainly I would like to see available by the time that we, I mean, I am for moving forward with the Freedom to Dream because just the excitement that it's created in, in the college and the community, I think is worth all of it, right? Sure, you have to still recognize that there's a cost, and you want to be prudent in how we spend our dollars, because again, it's going to have to come from one side, it's going to come either from tuition, from state money, or from, after the law of tax. So we've got to make sure that we balance everything out. But I certainly think that we want to go forward. I also want to make a point that when a student or doesn't qualify or falls out or drops out, whatever it is, yes, we don't have the opportunity to capture that money, but it's not going to be a continu, a continuation of the cost of the expense of the lost revenue. If they, if a student right now goes and registers and drops out of a program, again, maybe he's paid additional dollars, but he didn't, he didn't continue costing the college for, you know, four, three, three more semesters down the road. So those numbers have to be taken out of the, of the equation, whatever the percentage is. And so again, I want to see a true, I mean, again, a true analysis of what's potentially happened if the numbers that we're looking at right now kind of, kind of true out.
We have similar, similar conversations over the years when we reduced, we were charging university, we went from charging university rates for dual credit classes. University rates, okay. A student taking developmental had to pay university rates for developmental ed, just to give you an idea, and borrow the money to do that. We went from that to $100 a class, to $50 a class, to the FAST program. Even though there were college districts, when we were charging university rates, doing it for no cost, years before all this. So it's a different business model, and this is fundamentally a different approach to education, post-secondary education for this community. And that's, that's the uneasy part of all of this. And so when we're making big policy changes like this, making deep, taking big strides and making a deep impact in the educational attainment of the community, that's why the community is all excited about it. Nobody's excited about paying for anything or balancing the books or anything else. But the reality is, we are fundamentally changing education. And we're one of three, only three programs in the state like this. It's Austin, us, Alamos is too different, I wouldn't even consider it like ours, but then Amarillo is right after us. So we're at the cutting edge.
Which is why the financial model is so important.
Is why the financial model is so important, and we get it, and we get it.
Anything else, Mr. Garza?
Yeah, and again, I do want to see how it all trues out. As far as, I love the potential of a program, what David's talking about, try to entice students to come back in, but I think I'd prefer that that be a separate program. It could be modeled, slightly modeled after the Freedom to Dream. You can have some incentives, some initiatives to try to, but I'd hate for one to murky up the other, because, you know, my own preference, there's a huge need for that, but I think I want to make sure that we actually set, set forth that each one is scored on, or kind of analyzed on its own, on its own merit. Thank you.
Mr. Crowell?
Well, I agree with David and his, being real cautious about, and how we handle the folks that are not ready for college and program. And I agree with Dr. Escamilla in that it's a multiple, you know, I mean, the person who's pursuing a welding degree in preparatory to that is a lot different than the person pursuing a computer science degree. You know, so you've got to balance that out. And the feedback I got from, in the community was also, why did you limit it to, if I have 12 hours, why can't I get in the program? You know, and, you know, to me, those folks would accelerate our reimbursement from the state.
Yeah.
So.
We realize that, we realize that even before we started rolling. We saw that.
And then the third, the third thing is, if there's going to be a 2.0 version of this, maybe we can crystal ball the numbers for that also, to where we're looking at maybe a five-year, five or seven-year window of how the money's going to flow.
We talked about it at the break, and we're going to do a five-year scenario.
And the FAST program is a federal program?
State.
State program.
That's part of House Bill 8.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So there's not, what I was concerned about is any danger of the Department of Education federally going away and any funding that comes through that being curtailed.
In fact, it's, there's the opposite coming, is what we're expecting, is the short-term PEL is supposed to begin next year.
Summer of 2026.
Yep, next summer for the short-term programs, the CE programs and so forth. There's going to be some short-term grant dollars available for that, because they're trying to fuel the workforce on that side, on the technical side as well.
But any other types of?
HSI funding.
There's multiple funding that comes from the Department of Education, and some of that goes away, that needs to be factored in, not necessarily into the Freedom to Dream program, but into our budgetary program.
We're watching it closely. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Babli. Okay. The other piece on the financial plan, what is the assumption of the completion rate when you, when you look at the performance funding as a funding source for associate's degrees and certificates, or else transfer is indeed transfer, but is there an assumption that 100% of your 1,000 or 1,200 student cohort is going to complete, or is your completion rate and therefore your reimbursement rate, your outcome is based funding at 85%, what sub number?
So the modeling is based on each year that goes by, it's a 75% retention rate.
There we go. Okay.
And tying it to Dr. Viardial's plan, you were going to 57% and moving it to 70, 75%. 75%. That's, that's the, that's the number we're looking for.
Other questions right now, or you want to look at the video real fast?
Well, I just had some, Rudy mentioned the dual credit. So the 309 increase we had on those students getting 15 hours, if they all transfer, this is just a year increase in how many dual credit students we had get 15 hours, that's 770, or 772,000, just the baseline, not the increase. So as we push down and get more dual credit transfers, it helps Freedom to Dream and then, but then it, I mean, dual credit becomes even more profitable, I guess.
Dr. Kristi, Kristi Erbick's leading that charge right now.
Yeah.
And, you know, just fresh from the kinesiology department, she is taking a faculty's perspective into that operation with vigor, and so that's, that's that whole point there. We know, we know that the more we can do, and with the relatively low overhead of dual enrollment offerings in the high school and the FAST program covering those costs, we build off that. That's, that's the thing. This is a, an investment of time and a building of the program. It's just, it's just going to take a little bit more time. That getting, that being said, I mean, the word of mouth that is taken off, just like you all are saying in the community, you know, our close partners up at Skidmore Time and the Colonel there, I spoke with him the other day, the superintendent, yes, sir, I had the pleasure of meeting him at Oso Creek last year, you know, he was talking about just the transformative types of things that are going on over there because of the partnership with Delmar College and so forth. But are there any questions from the team that we, I don't usually ask this this way, but are there any questions that you all need answered so that we can more clearly present? I think college readiness, defining and showing a graphic with college, what college readiness actually means, is going to be critical.
Just for me, one comment. I know there's a dollars and cent component, but for me, I also look at it from the added value perspective. What added value are we giving to our students? And so what's come out of this so far is, we know that those, there's individuals that are not academically ready, but we are now going to introduce some initiative that's going to add value to this group, to this community, and get engaged in coming into our institution and preparing them for the next level in their educational career. That's the added value services that we've identified after introducing this initiative and many more. That's just one example.
Thank you.
Love.
We can fire up that video. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, and Dr. PBD.
Jumping back this late in the game, this program was available, kind of motivates you to not just jump back in, but jump back in 100%.
Speaking to the advisors first over the Freedom to Dream helped me feel more comfortable and like I wasn't alone.
It's never too late. I'm, I'm not young, I'm 50 years old, about to be 50 years old, and this is a great opportunity.
So my ultimate dream was actually going back to school and with finances and stuff, just not being in the right place, I just haven't had the time to go back. And with the Freedom to Dream, I've had the time to go back.
When I first thought about going to college, it was difficult because I was working two jobs. And so with Freedom to Dream, they provided a tuition waiver, so I didn't have to work so hard. Instead, I'm working actually on campus now, so it works out.
They provide everything. I mean, the updates to the library itself made it substantially easier to get access to things, especially supplemental instructions for my anatomy class. There's also the food pantry that Delmar provides, counseling sessions, different things like that for mental health and whatnot. So anything that you might be going through, Delmar has something for it to help you along.
Really, I was struggling in English, and I went to the Writing Stone Center. I actually ended my eight-week class with a 97 in there, so it's definitely worked for me. My advisor emails me frequently to make sure I'm doing good, so.
The Freedom to Dream is helping me to achieve and accomplish all of my dreams.
But I appreciate all that it has done to be able to get me started in chemistry.
After the associate's degree, I plan to continue here to get the BASOM, the Bachelor's of Organizational Leadership at Delmar.
Just that I'm really grateful for the opportunity.
For right now, one step at a time, as long as I can get that associates and then just take it from there, and we'll see what the future provides, definitely.
Thank you very much, yeah. That is definitely why we, why we're interested in the program, because we know that it's been a catalyst, and it's been the catalyst, as I said earlier today, it's been the big swing that we were looking for. So we just, we want to make sure that we can, we can do it and do it in the long run.
And I'll, I'll reach out to you, to you all, as needed before the meeting, so that we'll be fully apprised individually and so forth. If you have questions, please do not hesitate. Madam Chair, I'll be in close contact.
Thank you.
I had one more question.
Yes, sir.
On the CE idea, how does that work since CE doesn't line up to the traditional, do they just kind of start as soon as the next quarter that starts?
As soon as the first class starts.
Okay.
It depends on the area that they're interested in. It won't, it'll go into the, one of the, fall into, even with, as Chair Scott was talking about, even within one of the quarters, there's multiple. about, even within one of the quarters, there's multiple starts and stops and everything else. It's just when the class lights up, and it may be.
Okay. And so that's another reason why we want to do the 60 hours, because.
Yeah, it's a better.
Yeah.
It just works better.
Okay. And we'll have the specific list of the five programs you all want to do next time?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right. The next two agenda items, Mr. Rivera is going to take us through. They are similar, but we will take them individually.
One at a time.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regent's, I think it's fairly self-explanatory, you are voting for directors to two different appraisal district boards. First one, Nuasis County Appraisal District Board, and then the second one, the San Patricio County Appraisal District Board. For the Nuasis County Appraisal District Board, there are two vacancies, and I went through the sort of complicated history of how we are. Remember, this is a transition period where the appraisal districts are implementing new rules that apply to them on their board composition and manner of election, based on what the last legislative session produced. So for the Nuasis County Appraisal District Board, there are two candidates, there are two vacancies and two candidates. And if you look at the, at the, at the resolution, the two candidates are Devon Bakhta and Gabrielle Hilbold. You have, based on this complicated manner of signing votes, a total of 248 votes to cast. And so you are voting on two vacancies, and you have two candidates.
I move that we vote 124 votes for each candidate.
Second by.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Loeb, second by Mr. Kelly. Is there any discussion on that item? Is there any public comment on that item? All those in favor of the allocation of votes as prescribed in Mr. Loeb's motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously.
And the resolution reflecting that has been prepared, and we'll be ready for your signature, Madam Chair and.
Thank you.
Mr. Garza's secretary. Next, you have the San Patricio County Appraisal District Board vacancies, and there you've got a list of nominees, eight different nominees, and you have the grand total of 10 votes to cast in that election. I'm afraid I don't have the total breakdown, but as I remember, 10 votes is not very many, but it's what you have as a result of the ownership of property that you have in San Patricio County.
I think historically, we have cast our votes for Dr. Ann Matula as a former dean of business with Delmar College.
All right, so move.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Second, is there a?
Okay, Ann Matula?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Is there any other comment, any public comment on this motion? If not, then we, the motion is to cast all 10 votes in favor of Dr. Ann Matula. Please raise your hand in affirmation. Any negative, raise your hand. That motion passes unanimously.
And likewise, Madam Chair, a resolution has been prepared that will reflect that information.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Rudy, stick around, we have to sign stuff. Do you need those back? Because I have those. No, okay. All right, then, calendar is our next item on the agenda. Viking Fest is this Saturday.
Yes.
At the Winward Campus, 10 a.m.ish? No. What time is it? What time does Viking Fest start?
There's a race with about 600 people signed up that starts 10:45, and then it'll be going all day, and in the afternoon, we're going to have the welding competition and the awards, which will start around 4:45.
Okay, great.
It goes into the evening, about 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, something like that?
Yeah, a little bit later than that, probably about 5:30.
Yeah, so about 10 to 5.
So wear your Delmar College t-shirt and show up. It'll be fun. Happy Thanksgiving for folks traveling, hope you get air flights the way you need them to be, if you're not driving. Our board day will be December the 9th, and the season celebration and commencement are going to be on December 12th. And do we have a commencement speaker?
We're going to be having a student commencement speaker this year.
A student commencement speaker?
That's correct.
That's exciting. That's exciting. And then winter break will begin on the 19th and extend for a couple of weeks. And as I said earlier, we will not at this time have a, we will not have a regular January board meeting. If we need a called one, we will let you know. All right, with no further business, our meeting is adjourned at 3:09 p.m.